Of our mayor and city council members. Give them wisdom, give them discernment and clarity as they seek to make decisions together that will benefit our community, from the youngest of us to the oldest of us. In closing, as I'm sure there will be a variety of topics that will be discussed this evening, help our mayor and city council members be attentive to everything that will be put before them and said to them from our community. And as there will be differences of opinion due to the multiplicity of topics that will be discussed this evening, may our mayor and city council members collectively as a whole be a unified front at the end of this meeting. We submit this prayer to you in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
First to the pledge of our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Our first item of business is our special presentation that will be given, uh, Business of the Month, presented by JEDCO President Shane Pace, Mr. Pace.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, this month we are honoring the Cherokee Ranch Golf Club. Uh, I have Anthony Williams here, uh, if you don't mind coming up. So folks, uh, we have a lot of people in the room tonight. Every month we honor a different business here in Jacksonville that is contributing to the community in a great way. And, um, Cherokee Ranch Golf Association or the golf club, uh, they have been doing a ton of work out there. They've been a great partner with JEDCO as well as with the city. Um, they manage the golf course. Um, they have recently invested in pickleball courts. Um, that was about an eighty thousand dollar investment there. They partnered with JEDCO on that. Um, they're building a new clubhouse right now. Um, they're continuing to serve the community in many ways with First Tee and some of the other partnerships that they have. And it's people like Anthony and the board members and the folks out there that are working every day that really make Jacksonville a great place to live and work. And, uh, we want to continue those partnerships and just say thank you for all that you guys are doing out there, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear concerns from the citizens. Uh, it's not a dialogue. We just, uh, listen and take under advisement things that you want to talk about. I do have three that have turned these in. It appears that all three are related to item number nine on our agenda, which is our public hearing. That's probably a more appropriate place. You'll have a chance to come and speak for or against that during the public hearing. So I'd like to defer, if, if that's what you want to speak on, I'd like to defer those to that item. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on another topic that didn't turn one in? We will get to these, I promise you. Just a, okay? Is that okay, Brett?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we'll con- continue. Our next item is our consent agenda. Items under our consent agenda require little or no deliberations by the council. Uh, you can see those, their council, our, um, approval of the minutes, uh, holiday calendar, uh, purchase of three Tahos. Yes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goan.
Goan?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray. Any discussion on any of those?
Uh, the only clarif- clarification I'd like to make, Mayor, is that we understood from the workshop that we'll be observing the, uh, Veterans Day holiday on Monday, November tenth, and then you'll still hold your regular meeting in twenty twenty-five on Tuesday, November eleventh.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eight is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the construction of the Sunnydale Street lift station project.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, you got a wonderful overview of this project from Neil Holland of Stokeson Associates, the design engineer, as well as Randall Chandler, our Director of Public and Community Services at the Thursday workshop. This project was bid out. The city received five bids for the construction of a sanitary sewer line enhancement project to include, uh, standby generation and a lift station. The low bid came in at four hundred and sixty thousand dollars from CAPS, CAPCO. The design engineer has determined them to be a qualified contractor and is recommending award to them. This is in and around the area of the Sunnyvale Apartments and Medivac Road south of Tina Street. Uh, we would expect construction to commence, uh, prior to the end of the calendar year on this project, and it does complement the larger seven million dollar sewer project, uh, that'll be hopefully kicking off, uh, first half of twenty twenty-five in this general area.
Okay. Very good. So you've heard that explanation, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we award the bid for the construction of the Sunnydale Street lift stations.
I have a motion by Councilman Rob Goan. Second? Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any other discussion in that need? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number nine is our public hearing. Uh, we will hear and receive input regarding a requested zone change from B, one and two family to G Commercial with a special use permit to allow for a residential treatment facility for mental health and substance abuse at a property located north of the intersection of Benson Memorial and East Pine, adjacent to Benson Memorial Church, described as Lot Four B, Block Four, Ellis Heights, City of Jacksonville. Property ID is two-two-four-seven-eight-three-zero-zero-zero.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, just give a brief, uh, staff update prior to opening, uh, the public hearing. That applicant, Mr. Troy Dorman, who is here this evening, has applied for the one and two family zoning that's currently on this property to be revised or amended to G Commercial with the special use permit for the residential treatment facility. Give me one moment, I'll do. Good?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Perfect. Here's an overview of the zoning map as it stands today with the zoning classifications or districts being on the right-hand side of the screen. That's our zoning legend broken down into residential, non-residential, and then other uses being ag- open space and planned developments. This case went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, September seventeenth of this, uh, year, and there was a unanimous recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny th- this zoning request. You see the generally, uh, generally this zoning request sits amidst the one and two family, um, zoning uses to the east of this subject property. You do have some G Commercial, which is this applicant's request. Um, while it is currently zoned G Commercial, I believe it to be currently in a more residential or duplex style, um, use at the current time. So this special use permit, as you go through our zoning code of ordinances, you're going to see the different districts and then the special youth, uh, uses authorized in each of those districts. This particular special use request, as defined there on the left-hand side of the screen, is allowed all the way from the C multi-family, low-density residential classification down to the P planned development. So it has a pretty wide swath of zoning categories or districts that are applicable to this particular special use permit. I will, um, remind the council that, uh, if it is to be in a residentially zoned property, the property must be at least five acres. So for that reason, I believe the applicants like to go G Commercial because the subject property is one point eight acres, therefore C, D, and E are ineligible for the SUP. And just as a reminder on SUPs, and I think for the benefit of the audience, uh, they do require a f- affirmative four-fifth vote of the city council after, um, hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission and, um, required state notices. And then there are kind of eight conditions, um, based, um, that the, the city council is to consider as they hear, um, commentary this evening. And that is that the Planning and Zoning Commission shall determine that such uses are harmonious with and adaptable to building structures and uses of a bu- of a budding property and other property in the vicinity of the premises under consideration, so that's to be considered this evening and was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Also, if an SUP were to be issued this evening, uh, per our code of ordinances, if the property changes hands voluntarily or if it's damaged, uh, more than fifty percent by fire, the SUP is, uh, basically relinquished and then would have to be reissued based on a new application. We've done that in the past on structures here in town that were damaged by fire. And then three through eight, I've kind of, um, curtailed them just slightly, but, uh, definitely aim at the original intent here, that the granting of a special use permit by the city council may impose conditions. Those conditions apply to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Four on the list basically says that the applicant is to comply with those conditions. If they're unwilling to agree to those, then there's no need to pursue any further down the SUP path. Uh, the building permit shall be issued within six months of the granting of the special use permit. It goes on to say that that can be extended by additional city council action, but that's the baseline, that no alteration, modification, or structural, um, alterations may be made outside of the bounds of the SUP if one were to be issued this evening without seeking an amended SUP, um, that the Board of Adjustment or the Zoning Board of Adjustment has no jurisdiction on SUPs. And then finally, that if approved, the SUP, uh, is to be indicated on the official zoning map of the city with a S, just to indicate that an SUP, um, is overlaid on your base zoning in that district. And then this was a site plan issued by the applicant on the one point eight acre site. Generally, uh, north is up on this exhibit, so generally the complex, which is kind of like a hub and spoke style complex, ninety-six beds would be on the west side, favoring the west side of the property, um, with adequate parking east of the facility. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. So at this time, we will, I will open up a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding this requested bu- uh, zone change. Uh, and I know there's a lot of interest in this. Uh, do we know how many people would like to speak? Four of it's a zone change? Is it five or less?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, how many would, would like to speak against it? Is it, if we could just limit that to about five? I have three, so that would, uh, no, I have four, so. So, uh, so if we want to, if you want to come and speak in favor of, this will be your time, and then we will, uh, pick up with those that are against it. So if you'd like to speak publicly in favor of this own change, now's your time, come to the podium, state your name, and then, uh, if you will, here so we can.
Um, I'd like to toss to you, is there a chance that we can go second instead of going first?
Sure, no problem, if you prefer that.
I'd be fine too.
Okay. So we'll, uh, we'll change that.
I'll talk around.
So anybody that wants to speak against it, uh, we have four here that I know have turned, uh, in, and I'll just, or three, and I'll just go in the order that I've got them in my hand. Pastor Tommy Starks, you'll come to the podium, give your name and address and... Maybe limit your comments to some precise amount of time, maybe three or four minutes maximum or whatever, but we're here to listen.
I, I will try to limit mine.
That's fine, thank you, sir.
Uh, I'm Thomas Starks. I reside at nine twenty-two Benson Memorial.
Okay.
I am the pastor at Benson Memorial CME Church. Uh, the lot which you have is one of the, the things that we are in consideration and that we're thinking about and that we've looked at. At the present time, what you're talking about and using and changing the zoning for this facility would not be prestigious. Well, I wouldn't, may I make correct word? Would, would not be right. With Benson, there are approximately, uh, ten, fifteen, maybe twenty of the members of our church who are seniors. And one of the things that they spoke to me about was the fact that if a facility like that was placed near, that that would be an opportunity, that different things could happen. We, we hope it doesn't, but different things could happen. That would change, well, we'd have to lock our doors, put alarms and all like that. We're supposed to have them on there anyway, but that's another story. But what we want to do is to keep it where it is, as a nice, loving community. We have, within this community, worked very hard to update housing, people who subhousing, we've gone through the process of putting our flowers and all of those things of that nature, to try to update the community. So we think that this would be a really, a, a disastrous blow, not only, and finally, in this area, you have schools. With the school district in that area, you also have a seminary within that area. And then you only ha- then you have not only, uh, one, but you have two church, churches. And with that, and then you put in with that residential persons who live in that area, I, I really don't think that that would really, really, really be an ideal location. I, I, I say this, a- and nothing to take away from anybody, but if you put it where we are, try putting it where you are, and see if you like it over that word, you are, before you try putting it where we are, and see if you like what's happening where you are, where we are, and see if you like it that way. That's what I suggest to the council. Uh, I was here for the, uh, planning and zoning. I said then what I'm saying now, it's not a good an idea. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present, and may I, if I, would you allow me? Uh, the members of Benson and other community area people, would you just stand please? They're all concerned. They're all concerned. And for you to do that would really be a disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next, uh, uh, item, uh, person is, uh, Dr. Kenya Edom. If you'd like to speak, that would be great.
Dr. Kenya Edom here to speak and represent. As you guys know, we have been working very, very hard in District One to change the mentality of people thinking of that as a drug-infested impoverished community. We've got three aims. Those aims are safer, smarter, and healthier, and no one can supersede another. Our gentleman is suggesting that health should supersede this community's purpose of trying to regain its status as being elite, middle-class people who are working really hard to do a good job. The fact of the matter is that with that mental health facility that he's speaking of, it's very specific to veterans. We don't have a whole lot of veterans in our community. It's also more of a post-treatment center, which means that those are people who they're not mandatorily being called to come in, and I'm sure he will correct me if I'm wrong. But in these types of facilities, these people are coming from out of state, out of town. They don't care about our community. They rarely care about our community. And veterans always come with a lot of skills in military. So I have brought the most recent statistics that have been done on mass shootings. So let us keep in mind, this project that was done by the National Institute of Justice, they looked over the past fifty years of mass shootings, and what they came up with was that one, most of those have happened in the last ten years. There's been a hundred and sixty-seven, the most devastating of which were in the last five years. And let me cut to the chase. The death toll has risen sharply, particularly in the last decade in the nineteen seventies. Mass shootings claim an average of eight lives per year. Most individuals who perpetrated the mass shootings had a prior criminal record, sixty-four point five percent, a history of violence, sixty-two point eight percent, and domestic violence, twenty-seven point nine percent, and twenty-eight point five percent had a military background. Most died on the scene of the shootings. We want to stay safe. And we want our community to be safe. Somewhere else, please.
Thank you. That's all the cards that I've got as far as, uh, against. Was there anybody else that would like to speak against during this public hearing? Okay. Come and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peggy Alexander. I would like to thank Mr. Hubbard for solving a problem that we've had for probably fifteen years aboard, but right now I'm concerned about, we all have spent a substantial amount of money through the years, and when we could play, this, the worldly would come out and only like mow, mow the grass or trip some trees or something, but after finding the major problem, they found it on MoMA Street, and we are just wondering, is there any way that we could get any of our money back due to the problem of it being not a problem of ours, it's like for the city where they didn't really look for the problem all these years.
Thank you for your comment. The, the public hearing, yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else about the, uh, zoning change? Okay, now, yeah, those who are for, it's your turn, thank you. And anyone else that wants to speak in favor of? Thank you, sir.
Okay. My name is Troy Dorman, and I live in Tyler, Texas. I was born in Texas, and I, people's fear, I understand, people's fear. And we went to the zoning committee and we talked about what a great treatment center and how wonderful our staff is and the results are fantastic and those types of things. And, um, what we didn't address was we didn't address the fear. We talked to someone in the city who said, "Don't share with you our plan." Our plan the whole time for eight years has been to hire police officers. So to staff twenty-four seven with off-duty police officers, they appreciate the extra hours, the extra paycheck, and they're uniquely trained to be in there. I can share with you that I've run residential treatment centers for twenty years with the caveat that they're, all of them, every one of our treatment centers were voluntary. So the people had to go through a process of qualification to get into the facility. And part of that is, the biggest part of that is to make sure it's a good fit. So if they're dangerous, they can't come. If their mental health problems are too great, they can't come. If they can't fit into a group conversation and help the group, they can't come. In twenty years, we never one time had an accident, a fight, anything. We had a seventeen-year-old boy punch another seventeen-year-old boy in the nose because he looked at a girl that he had a crush on, and that was it. We, you don't have people in a voluntary setting, you don't have people going out that door to go commit crime, they get, would get kicked out. And this is their chance at life. This is their chance to get back with their family. We heard about, from the doctor, talking about how many mass shootings there were, and twenty-eight percent of them were for people who had a military background. What percentage of those, all of those mass shootings were people who had mental health issues, possible substance abuse? How many of you have heard ever in your life that these people who committed this crime that had this mental health or substance abuse, that none of them needed help? You've never heard that, because what do they need? They need help. How many of those mass shootings would have been prevented had they received help, an appropriate level of care? If they're in a situation such as jail or something like that, and they're forced to come into a treatment center, they're just getting out of jail. They don't have the results. We had eighty-nine percent success rate when people volunteered to come, they stayed longer than ninety days, and we gave them hope. We talked about a lot of deaths, we talked about all kinds of things. There's twenty-two suicides today and tomorrow and yesterday from this group of people, war veterans suffering with PTSD and using alcohol and drugs to self-medicate. That's eight hundred a year officially. Eight hundred a year, it's five times that unofficially. It's a very large number, forty thousand suicides from that group, and what's the number one reason is they don't have hope. We're paying for this ourselves. We have no government grants. I'm personally paying for this with my wife. We're sacrificing everything we've got to build this facility so war veterans in Massachusetts or someplace else could hear about it and have hope. Maybe I can get in there, maybe I can get a job. This is a faith-based program. This is for people who need forgiveness in your life. I don't know how many of you are faith-driven, I don't know, but these people are isolated, they have nobody, there is no hope, the VA doesn't have a facility like this. They've asked a contract with us because they can't integrate treatment. The VA did that. UT Health wants to partner with us. Tyler Junior College asked to partner with us. We've got a lot going on, and this is terrific. So we've got security in place. It's been in place for eight years. That's an appropriate step. We stopped the people from even showing up by doing the assessment prior to them getting here. When they get here, and I've seen this, they cry, they're thankful, they get a new wardrobe. They have hope. When they have hope, suicides drop like a rock. That's what the purpose of this is. We don't bring criminals in here. We can't allow people with a criminal background to come in here. We don't allow people who've got domestic violence experience to come in here. Those people aren't here. These are people, and the good Reverend brought up such a great point, don't put him in our neighborhood, consider putting him in your neighborhood. Well, let me ask the Reverend, if this was your son, and it was your son who's suicidal, and there's no place in the country to go, except here's a chance for him to get into a facility in Jacksonville, Texas, where would you want them to vote then? What if it was their kids? There isn't one, and I've done the research, and the VA has to, and I'm telling you right now, it doesn't exist. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for your comments. This really shouldn't be a dialogue between them, so, but thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak, uh, in favor of? If not, I will close the public hearing, and we'll go to Adam B. to discuss and consider with possible actions, approval of the ordinance granting the requested zone change with the special use permit. Do you have any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to deny the zoning change from B to G with the special use permit.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Latitia Horace to deny. Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray. Any discussion we need to have?
I, I'd like to offer just a couple of comments, um, considering that this is being proposed for District One. Um, and I, I would just like to say to the applicant, I certainly can appreciate the premise behind what it is you're looking to do. I can. Um, alcohol and drug abuse is something that is rampant in this country. Um, it is something that, I have members in my own family that have struggled with it, um, that are currently struggling with it. So I don't sit here and speak from a place of disregard, um, or a place of simply not being able to relate. But for me, this comes from two places, two perspectives. One, I have to listen very closely to the people that I represent, um, and two, I live literally down the street from the site that you're proposing. Um, and there is a concern about the population that you're looking to serve, and when it comes to safety and security, and you're proposing to put this in a residential neighborhood, that is a concern. Even with the security measures that you're proposing, there is the concern that things could still happen and get out of hand. there is the concern that things could still happen and get out of hand. Um I understand that you're offering to be very selective in who is in your facility. I have to wonder if you're that selective, are you really serving the people who need the most help then? We also talked about, I mean, you didn't bring it up today, but there's the issue of serving veterans and what it is that you're going to charge folks that are going to be in the facility. And I don't know how many veterans can actually afford that cost. So I don't know how many veterans are going to actually be benefiting from it. So there's just a lot of concern that I have with it. And I just can't in good conscience approve it. I think that drug and alcohol treatment is important. I think it's something that even as a community, we could benefit from. But I think its location, I think its proximity to not one but two schools in this community is just too much of a risk for us to take. And I think it's something that could be looked at and may be proposed elsewhere. And I think those are all the comments that I can offer.
Anybody else?
And I'm with Latitia on all this, that I mean, the concept of this type of facility is excellent. I mean, something that may, you know, maybe our town needs. But from my perspective, as a councilman, having to approve something like this, the only thing I have to look at are thirty-two parking places. And one point five acres and baseball fields and sporting fields and I I don't, I don't know how that fits in all that space. I mean, I'm I'm just one of those brain-braining people that, you know, show me a floor plan of the hospital, show me a floor plan of the treatment center, how it fits on one point eight acres, and I'd feel better about supporting something based on just, I'm a math person, I'm a numbers person, I'm a visual person. Show me how this all works on that piece of land, you know? That's it.
Okay. Anybody else? Call for votes. All in favor of denying the uh S P and the uh zone change, say aye. Do we need a?
I'm sorry.
You don't need a roll call.
All in favor of denying the unchanged, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing the denial carries. Thank you. Item number ten, uh is any action out of executive session, which we do not have any. So item number eleven is open forum for mayor and council. So anybody have anything you want to talk about, mayor and council? Nothing? All right. We'll go to uh City Manager.
Very well. Thank you, Mayor. Pretty short uh this evening. We've been talking about the voting access grant for a long time. Uh we had talked about it starting in October. We received a letter last week from the contractor that they would be uh starting in November. They were issued a bunch of change orders on their current contract in Tyler, Texas. And so um in order to give us a satisfactory crew down here to um continue construction and start construction on our project, they've had a delay until November. We will definitely still see this start before the end of the calendar year. You will see some work led by our staff. It's actually already underway. There was some asbestos abatement going on in the structure today by a professional service entity. Um and you'll see some structures removed between now and probably the start of construction in November. But just wanted to make the council aware of that. One thing we stressed to the contractor was, when you start, you start. We don't want to see a couple guys one day and then they leave, and then a couple guys and gals come through four days later. That's very frustrating. You want to see consistent progress. So I do actually appreciate the fact that they've said, hey, to give you what you've asked for, um we don't want to send a couple guys and a couple shovels. We want to send the whole crew. So slight delay there. However, they have issued in writing that they don't intend to delay the completion date, which is spec for late May twenty twenty-five. Community Health Fair, and Renissa can probably elaborate on this if you have any questions, but there'll be a community health fair. I guess it's our second annual. This was an effort kind of spearheaded by Renissa last year, held at UT Health Hospital here in Jacksonville. I think there were upwards of uh three dozen vendors last year, offering a myriad of different services there and kind of the foyer, lobbies, and some of the hallways that spawn off of that. And it is open to the uh entire public. So we really started that as an initiative just aimed at um our employees. And then we found out through Shane, there were some employers in town that were interested in something like that. And then albeit, we just said, hey, with all this effort, why don't we just open it up to the whole community? I know for a fact, last year, we had one um female take uh part in the mammogram screening and actually had early detection of breast cancer, and she went on to receive further treatment. So um those are incredibly important, and that's an opportunity at the at the uh at the fair. Outside of that, um I I hope you were able to come to uh National Night Out last uh week. It was a great party. It was the fourth annual um party where we consolidated all the effort that goes into National Night Out into downtown. So Amanda Bragg has done a wonderful job spearheading that. Our business community comes out to shine. I was going to allow Chief Williams a minute or two to elaborate on that, and then there's a video put together by Al Lambert, um who does a lot of work for us um and works at Central Baptist Church.
Can we go back to open forum for one second? Look at District One. Congrats, you people. It's impressive that you came out and you made your voices heard. It makes me feel good to sit here and see the engagement of the community. Okay, that's it. Chief.
So this is our fourth year. Um so we used to do neighborhood parties. I had about ten at each one of them, and we decided we'd move it downtown. And um I think we went from fifth place nationwide to second place nationwide to first place last year in the United States of America. And this is our fourth big party attendance. I'm still looking and doing the evaluation of drone footage. But everybody that can see knows that we had more people uh this year than last year. Last year, we had nine thousand. Uh when you look through the west towards Ragsdale, uh last year, there was a void of people. This year, it was packed. And I think the west side of the overpass had more people on it than the east side. So we're very, very proud of our community, very proud of uh Amanda's efforts. Um every year, she goes out and talks people into supporting.
The taser did it for me.
Well, it's whatever works. Um one of the commentaries that I keep hearing, uh we for the last six months have struggled with whether we would compete this year again. Um and we decided that we weren't, and here's the reason why. If you look at the top twenty-five cities or the top twenty-five in our categories, a lot of those cities are other Texas cities. We have been contacted um by many of those on the list and other folks within the state and actually even outside of the state, how how do we get to first place? And like I told you, I've been doing this thirty-four years. First time I've ever seen a trophy. Um so the more we got to talking about it, wouldn't it be great if other Texas cities could also achieve the first ranking in the in the nation? Um Texas really seems to have a hold on National Night Out. We're very proud of that. I got asked at the Police Chiefs Conference about our our first place rating, and uh we're sharing the wealth. So I know that Kilbores asked her for a lot of, a lot of information. Uh this is your opportunity to shine once again. Your own national television's right there.
Mayor, City Council, thank y'all for the opportunity to allow us to be centralized in one location. I think that's ultimately what I created the success for our city and also offering to um our citizens in our community that everything was out. There was only two rules of our entire event, that there is no alcohol, and that everything is absolutely free. That way, everyone has the equal um part to participate in anything that they wanted to. So it means a lot to me to be able to come and do that. So thank y'all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
Appreciate the play.
Uh it did work, Brett. Ooh, do we have audio?
Amanda's gonna save it again.
Maybe you just gotta turn the volume up.
Is there a TV remote? Are you, Brett?
I'd rather get a shirt right now.
Pull out all stops this year.
National Night Out Party. This is the biggest National Night Out Party in East Texas. So I'm very thankful for all of y'all. Major police officers are out here every day working hard for you. You don't have to pay for a thing out here. It's all free. So eat, drink, have fun.
The National Night Out Campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in Jacksonville to join over thirty-eight million neighbors across eighteen thousand communities.
We're so thankful for our law enforcement officers and for a night to celebrate them and recognize them and Lord, with all the nonsense going on in the world out there, that they feel the love tonight.
National Night Out Party. This is the biggest National Night Out Party in East Texas. So I'm very thankful for all of y'all. Major police officers are out here every day working hard for you.
Chief, by not uh competing in the competition this year, as Don Meredith would have said, you took one for the gift.
We would steal them easily, I have no doubt. And uh special shout-out to Rob for cooking some of you. I appreciate his time, his uh his energy, his uh resources. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great.
All right.
Anything else?